The organizational meeting of the Littleton Select Board is called for order at 5:00 PM on Monday, March 29, 2021. There are only two items of business to be acted upon. The first being to choose the vice chairman position on the select board. The floor is open for a motion to nominate a select board member to the vice chairman position.
I nominate Roger.
I'll second it.
There is a motion to nominate Roger Emerson. Do I have a second? I have a second. There's a second. All those in favor indicate by voice vote.
Aye.
Thank you. The floor is open for a motion to nominate a select board member to the chairman position.
I nominate Carrie to stay on as chairman.
There is a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
There is a second. All those in favor indicate by voice vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Given there is no other business to come before the select board during this organizational meeting, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This organizational meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
The next part of this business is, we sadly are going to read to you Chad Stern's resignation letter. "I, Chad Sterns, do hereby resign my office of selectman for the town of Littleton effective immediately this 25th day of March, 2021. It has been an honor to serve my community the past two years and a privilege to serve along selectmen and employees who, like me, only want the best for the town and community they live and work in. Sincerely, Chad Sterns." He will stay on and help with LIDC and also the River District and other projects, but as of that day, he has resigned. We will be making a selection for another selectman to fill his position probably later than April 12 at noon. There will be another person put in that position. So tonight, we want to hear from you. We do have some guidelines for public input. There is a microphone down here on the floor. There's a microphone up there in the balcony. These are the guidelines, though, because we do want to keep it civil. We want to be able to listen respectfully to each other. We want to avoid interrupting. We want to potentially criticize ideas, but not people. We want to stay calm. We want to keep comments to a maximum of two minutes. That way, we can get as many people to speak as possible. We would appreciate no repetitive comments. We keep it, like I said, keep it civil in terms of tone and content. We want to avoid blame, and we also want to avoid speculation. We want to speak the truth, and we want to allow everyone that wants a chance to speak. You have a First Amendment right to speak. So I know it was indicated that only Littleton residents... You know what? What goes on in Littleton also is affected by the region. So we do want to give others in the area an opportunity to speak too. So with that being said, also, before you speak, please identify yourself. We would appreciate that. But also, we as a select board do not want to have to call anyone out of order. If this does happen, however, you will be given one warning for an out of order, and then after that, you may be asked to leave the building. Any questions, comments on the guidelines, what's expected, from all of us? And we are ending at six. Who would like to be the first speaker?
Hi, I'm Chris Sweeney, Littleton New Hampshire. I'm going to talk about why I think the selection for Mr. Gleason was inappropriate. A town manager search is the board's responsibility. The International City County Management Association describes the process of hiring a town manager as a decision-making process for determining and applying specific priorities for nominating and appointing candidates. Best practices include disclosing who is making the decision in a minute, including who the members of the committee are, and publicizing the timeline for the hiring process. Share what and how the criteria is applied. Guiding priorities versus position description versus candidate profile. Provide opportunity for community input, surveys, focus groups, and listening sessions, all of which Littleton's process would like. In comparison to other New Hampshire towns, Gleason stands out as the most secretive and rushed. Your search priorities may align with your ideals, but they are not necessarily representative of community priorities. But even so, since you never publicly set their priorities and took no public input, your process assures us of neither. Because your process lacked transparency and did not take the community's input, the process failed to enable authentic accountability for our residents. And now you have chosen a candidate that over 500 Littleton community members objected. Mr. Gleason is a liability to Littleton, and Mr. Gleason should not be our new town manager.
Who would like to be next?
Bruce Calvo. I was talking with Judy White, number one, and she informed me that there was an article that was passed by the town a number of years ago. Hang on. It was a requirement that you had to, if you worked for the town of Littleton, you have to have a, you have to be, have had a course on human services. Have any of you had any courses on human services under the state of New Hampshire or... I'm asking you.
No, not familiar with it.
About you, Carrie.
What qualifies as human services?
There's a law here, and Judy said that she had two certificates showing in her office that she had taken the course. I actually asked, I asked the Water and Light Department, and they in turn informed me that they had, about a month ago, they had everybody in their establishment take one of the courses out of the fire at that time. But she says that it was passed by the town that they had to do it. I actually asked down at the town garage as well, I was thinking, and they told me that they didn't think that they had it all down there, or fire at that time was concerned either. But what it is, is if you get, if you get into a case where somebody decides to come back against the community, and you do not have this course out of the thing on it, the first thing the attorney is going to ask you, have you taken the course? And nine out of 10 times, if you haven't taken the course, you'll lose in court pertaining to it. At any one time, there's approximately 250 cases pending in the state of New Hampshire, and it's the same way with other states as well. They're all pending at any time. And my recommendations are that you in turn look at, you ought, all of you ought to have to take this course.
Bruce, I hate to cut you short, but your two minutes is up, and we want to make sure we have a lot of people...
Well, I got five other things too, so...
Okay, well, if we can get to it, we do want to give everybody an opportunity that wants to speak. We will look into that. Thank you. And it was Judy White that brought that to your attention, correct?
Yeah.
Who's next?
Hi, I'm Rudy Joseph, resident of Littleton. And in probably a week or two weeks, I've been really foul with what's going on, you know, in Littleton, if you got to the town manager. Because they're all, you know, I would really appreciate, and I want to thank you, Mr. Sweeney, you know, to take the time and just, you know, go through everything, you know, that the town is supposed to know. Now, my main concern is this. I don't understand why the selectmen, regardless, you know, that you guys have got the power to do whatever you want, actually it's no need for power. It's a piece of power, but that's great. Anyway, why you guys, you know, talk with, you know, talk with the citizens in Littleton and making sure that everybody's happy with the new selectmen that you guys, you know, appoint for the job? It seems like, you know, everybody, nobody's happy, nobody, you know. There was this guy over here, you know, that comes from Florida, and he comes over here, right, you know, and I called it to the chairman, and this guy's got, you know, it's a lot of experience, 20 years and stuff like that. But it's not the 20 years. It's that you want the people in Littleton to be happy for somebody that represents the people in Littleton. You know, if you guys, you know, it's really, if you're going to change your mind, it would be really appreciated, not just for me, for everybody, that you manage.
Thank you, I'm Jim Alvin, and I forgot my easel, so I'll try to improvise. I've got an easel. Lookton has a brand. It's a successful brand. It's a successful brand, an up-and-coming town in New England. We're attracting younger people like no other town in New Hampshire, and that's data base. That's a fact. This is a craft, artisanal, outdoor lifestyle. These people are pursuing this. It's what they're coming here for, it's attracting the youth and the openness and collaboration of our community. We've always been based on resiliency and collaboration. We've gotten media recognition to support that. Just in the past year, we've been nationally recognized with our brand on Samantha Brown's PBS series and on the Polish Travel Channel show. Regionally, we're working with Nessun right now to feature New Hampshire. This is our brand, and this is our brand. But unfortunately, on April 12, you were looking to make this our brand. This is not our brand. Please don't make it so. Mr. Gleason says this was his lowest point. He regrets it. I'm sure he does. And I believe we shouldn't define someone based on their lowest point. People have opportunity to change in second half. However, if he were sincere in that, we wouldn't have this. His LinkedIn page referring to his former employer, Mascot Florida, as trashcocked, trashing his former employer on LinkedIn while going through a job interview process. We also have this. February 25, also contemporaneous with his hiring, with his search process hiring. I had to redact it a little to keep, so that we keep a PG 13 rating here. He is attacking the woman with whom he may or may not have had an altercation with. Calls her a bee. Also says she should be working at Dollar General in the future.
Jim, it's Tom.
Okay, okay. Can I just say, when you hire someone, you hire their skills, their experience, but also their temperament and judgment. This does not show the appropriate temperament or judgment for the next town manager of Littleton. Please turn this around.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Norm O'Leary, Littleton resident, 52 years. I have a question, because are you hiring Mr. Gleason off with a contract? Does he have a contract? How does that work?
We're working that out right now. So he will have a contract, yes.
So if he doesn't work out, you could lay it off. You could become a free agent, pass it on.
There is a probation period.
Okay. Well, I'm one of the old guys that this group is trying to get out of town. I voted for you, and I'm supporting you guys on your decision. That's what they elect you, the select board for, every, every time. And so I'm putting my faith in you, the board, the select board, on this choice, excuse me, that you made.
Who would like to speak next?
My name is David. Thank you, guys, for being here today. Thank you, Chris, for doing what you're doing. It's important. Elections have consequences. Presidents choose Supreme Court justices. Selectmen choose town managers. With that being said, you said there's a new select position open. How is that going to be chosen by April 12?
We have to follow the specific RSAs, so that's what we're looking into right now, David. Good question.
So you'll just appoint somebody?
We have the authority to appoint someone, yes.
So again, elections have consequences. Those who know me, I'm pretty middle-of-the-road. I respect what both these people do upfront, but I also recognize you guys as an ex are way out of this one. I'd like to know when Jim's going to be here to answer questions from the community.
He starts his position April 12. We would like to do an open house. We would like to have an opportunity for you to spend time with him, to ask questions, but we don't have a date set for that yet.
I believe the man has a right to stand up and talk to us and defend who he is and what he's done. My fear is, is there's, well, not necessarily a fear, it's just the way it is. I believe Jim Gleason's going to come in, and I believe he's going to be our town manager. Do I agree with it? No. Do I think the man deserves a chance? Probably not that he's going to get one. It's folks like the people that are here, they're going to keep him to task. Let's make sure he stays on task and does what's best for this town, because we may not have the choice. Again, Carrie, Roger, I appreciate what you guys do. You're always honest with me, and I hope this works out for you. Thank you.
Thank you, David. He's the manager of Thayer's. And David, what is...
I'm a Littleton resident.
What's your last name, David?
I'm Steve, I'm a Littleton resident, I'm not the Thayer's manager. Wish we hadn't said that. Thayer's is Littleton. Thayer's is the owner of Thayer's. He doesn't like me doing political, because we're a hotel. He doesn't welcome everybody in Littleton, and I think it's important to hear, I need to know what's happening up there. I appreciate what these guys do, and I appreciate it. I think there's something going on here that needs to be taken care of. This is important stuff, right, wrong, or different. There's important stuff happening in this town right now. They need to get together, talk about it.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next one, Dave. Thank you. Who would like to be next?
Yeah, thank you. I kind of wish I didn't have to be here tonight and didn't really have to say anything, but I feel like something kind of needs to be said. And I guess my one piece of advice, if we can take anything away from this, because I don't know if any decisions can be changed at this point, but I would hope that moving forward, the town, when they hire someone, also take a look at their social media profiles, both LinkedIn and Facebook. I think that should be standard procedure, and most companies do that as part of the hiring process. When I first heard about this issue, I was like, oh, what's going on? Is this, you know, cancel culture coming to Littleton? And I looked into it, and I was like, okay, I'm going to make my own decision. So I actually looked at Jim Gleason's Facebook page, which is public, and I was very unpleasantly surprised. Myself, like about half of Littleton voters, are Republicans, who Jim Gleason described as an infection. I also happen to be a member of the National Rifle Association, which Jim Gleason described as the Nazi Rifle Association. So without ever having met this person, I know that if they know about me and my background, they will think I am a Nazi, and my political views are an infection that will kill the country. And this isn't his own private comments. This is a publicly available page. I'm not friends with him on Facebook. Anyone who wants to find out about this person can go and look. And I don't think that, you know, that, it's fine to have those opinions. This is a free country. But when you are in a position where you represent the town, we welcome everybody here. It doesn't matter what your affiliate affiliation is. And I think that this person, although they might have the experience, the temperament is seriously called into question. Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin. Who would like to be next?
Talk, Carrie.
Yeah, I didn't see anybody else right now, so...
I'm not here because of the town manager, by the way. I, I...
Bruce, if that's the case, we truly want to just leave it to that, because we want to give everybody a chance. If we've exhausted everybody from sharing, that's the main focus tonight. We want to give people a voice.
I'm not here for that. I want to go to the last meeting, and you guys canceled it. I have some stuff that I feel is important. This is a selectman's meeting, and I'd be here to discuss it.
But it is not a normal selectman's meeting. This is purposely for the folks that either are for or against the town...
That was not advertised that way in any, at all, Carrie.
It is, it is a special meeting, Bruce. On April 12, we'll have our regularly scheduled select board meeting. At that point, we do want to hear what you have to say, but we have to keep it focused tonight, because we're limited on time, and we're ending this at six. And I do want to re, do want...
One thing is, and I'll mention it, there's a contract that's out, that you're talking about hiring somebody on it too. There's a local business within the immediate area that has purchasing agents out of it, and they have it built into their contract that the purchasing agents cannot in turn be buying stuff and getting, getting gifts out of the thing on it. Wherever you have this, you should be putting that into a contract, and by what? When you see trucks being bought for $200,000, $300,000, fire trucks and everything like this on it, the fact is that this should be in everybody's contract of employment situation out of it that says they cannot take any gifts of anything of this nature on it, and is part of any contract or hiring practices of what you do.
Bruce, if you want to bring that up at the April 12 meeting, we can address it, or you can bring it up again, but tonight, we're specifically giving folks a chance.
Should be advertised, that's what it was, because that's not what you advertise.
Littleton residents and/or neighboring residents. We want to hear from them to, that's the purpose for this, for this meeting. So do we have somebody else that would like to speak?
Thank you for being here. Does Mr. Gleason know this meeting's about him tonight? Well, first impressions sort of mean a lot, and I think the fact that he's not here says a lot about his character and how he's going to run this town as town manager. And I'm all about second chances, but from what I know about this guy so far, the fact that he's not here, he doesn't deserve a second chance, not here, not now. Thank you.
Sure you can. Do you want the...
Mr. Gleason's not here. He got his second COVID shot today, and he'll be coming up here, I believe, on the ninth or eighth, yeah. But that's why he's not here. He was scheduled for a second shot today in Florida. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name's Carrie Way. I've been a resident here for 42 years, and this is not something that I routinely come to. So please forgive me, but I'd like to ask a clarification question, and that is of the select board. How do you pick a selectman? Do they have to apply for the position, or is it someone that you have just found within the community? Can you please answer that question for me? Thank you.
That's a good question, Carrie. According to, without getting real technical, 669, colon, 63, vacancies in the board of selectmen should be filled by appointment made by the... That's not the one we want. No, this is the appointment of the election, or the selectman. While we're looking for that, there is a specific RSA. We do, we have New Hampshire Municipal Association, we put it out on Indeed, there are other different avenues, you don't have it, that we use to attract, to put the word out there that we're looking for a town manager. We had, is that the one? I thought that was specific to the board of selectmen. Oh, okay.
I did, but I meant the whole process.
Okay, so this...
If Mr. Gleason is town manager, replacing, assuming the gentleman at the table, congrats. So that was more or less my, you know. I know that I voted a selectman. Do we not vote for town manager? And if we don't, how does that happen?
Right, the selectmen have the authority to appoint and hire the town manager.
Do they have to apply?
Of course they do.
Yes.
So did Mr. Gleason apply?
He sure did. And you all should know too, I know this was just going to be a listening session, we went through a process with each one. We, we had about 14, 15 applications, and six of them rose to the top. And with those six, we did the Google searches, we did the LinkedIn, we did all of that, because nowadays, I mean, you can find anything about anybody. We were well aware, when we went into that interview process with Mr. Gleason, exactly what was there. And he offered it. He didn't, we didn't have to ask him about it. He completely offered it and was honest with us. Does that help, Carrie? Okay. We have, you have a...
Hi, I find it incredibly hard to believe, oh, my name's Megan, I live in Littleton. I find it incredibly hard to believe that out of 14 candidates, and you knowing what you know about Mr. Gleason, that he was the best candidate. Can you tell us anything about why you think he was better than everyone else, and you picked him for the job? Roger, would you have anything to say to that?
Yep. There's a lot of people that didn't meet the criteria. There's a lot of people that didn't have any town manager's experience. We tried to do the best we could for Littleton. There's a lot of stuff that's going on that is really behind the scenes, that we need somebody to clean up some stuff. Out of all the stuff that we've, the people that we looked at, he has the best background that we could find for taking care of the problems we have.
He carried a lot of different problems. Should I try and get him fixed? Because in my opinion, he's just bringing more problems.
I can't quite understand you.
Oh, can you elaborate on the problem you're speaking of? Because in my opinion, he's just going to bring more problems and more division in Littleton, if not even that.
No, absolutely not. And we can't elaborate on some of the stuff that's going on. You know, we've changed a bunch of positions, and it's just, there's some stuff that will be coming out. We're looking for some audit updates and stuff like that that we really need to have. So it's, you know, we need to get back up on the par, and he seems like he has the experience to get us back to where we need to be.
He was a town manager in Florida, correct? He was a town manager in Florida?
Yes.
Was he let go from that position?
He's been in a few different small cities. One of them, he was in for 18 years.
Do we know why, did he quit that job, or was he fired?
I'm pretty sure he got deployed to Iraq for a year. We vetted, we talked to the people down there that still work in that office.
And they support him?
They support him. They support him. We tried to find out if anybody had anything bad to say about him.
Besides the Facebook posts and everything that we've all seen?
Uh, the sirens and stuff, so...
I mean, we all found the bad stuff. I'm just finding it hard to believe that you guys didn't find anything negative?
Um, out of the four people that we talked to, one person said the only thing she had bad to say about him was he may be a little chatty. Other than that, there was nothing.
Aren't we all?
So, I mean, I know you guys have seen the videos. But to me, all we're seeing is the end of the video. I mean, everybody has a breaking point.
But I have a breaking point and I would never, ever react that way. And I'm not in a position of power. And he was, and he chose to react that way. And I'm still not hearing why we think he is the best choice out of all 14 people that you guys selected him. We had found these blatant racism, sexism, all of these things that Littleton does not need. And you have not given me one reason why we still think he was better than everyone else. Except to Iraq for a year.
You know, I encourage you to sit down and talk to Mr. Gleason for a few minutes.
He never got that opportunity.
And you guys already have. You already gave him a contract, so he's already here. None of us had a say in it, not one of us. And so now we're voicing it. And now you want us to talk to him, but it's already been done.
Um, the newspapers were able to get ahold of him? I swear I put my mouth. No.
I said, if we're seeking truth, then we want to dig down to the truth. And I think what we've seen, and we've all seen snippets of it, and that was, it was concerning to us when we looked at it as, as a Select Board. What we're finding though, there's way more to it, which as we get closer to the truth, it's the truth. And it...
There's no digging behind this. It's the truth.
You know, there's two things here too. Either you trust us as selectmen. We don't, you know, and I think about Littleton, Littleton is becoming a younger town and that is super exciting. Um, I was talking to the gal, Jack and Finn, on this weekend. And these young people are coming in. It's, it's awesome, they have money to spend. One of the things that Jim is really good at is the budgeting, the, uh, the economic part of it. And he may be older, uh, but he certainly has...
That literally has to be nothing to do with...
He has a handle, he has...
No problem probably, Calvin, yes.
Who else? Somebody else? Okay, right here? No, Rudy, yeah.
Hi, my name is Courtney Bowler. I've been on my blog, resident of Littleton. And, um, my understanding is that roles that are leadership roles in companies or even businesses, even if you're at the lower level of leadership...
Can you put the mic up a little closer, Courtney? Thank you.
Even if you're at the lower level of leadership, a lot of times there's a panel interview with people that that person would be interacting with. And while the town manager would be interacting with the folks down in Town Hall, they would be also interacting with the citizens of this town. So I'm wondering if that was given an opportunity to have, you know, a question and answer time for people who are concerned about the leadership in this town, if we were given that opportunity. I understand we're here right now to voice our concerns, but it's been pointed out that, um, the contract has already been given. So it just, it feels like sort of a last ditch effort to appease the younger voters. And that's what it sounded like you were mentioning. Because we're a younger crowd, um, that's our opposition. But I'm just wondering if there was a panel option for concerned citizens or citizens who just are interested and wondering about their leadership options?
That was a question. If she asked if there was ever an opportunity to speak to her or even if there was a possible candidate for her.
Given, if, given the, um, COVID is...
Yes, and yes for that question. You feel like it's a yes or no? Did you just question?
I think, I think the question is, were they given an opportunity to meet with the candidates ahead of time?
Why take our input now? Why have they got an opportunity before until after the fact? Seems null and void at this point that you want to hear what we're starting out. Which makes us lose...
My name is Blake Roberts and I live in this town. And I gotta be honest, like I've all, I consider myself one of these, this younger generation I go and keep talking about. And it seems weird in here that it's taken on a negative connotation. Sir, I grew up in the South and I have the most deep respect for my elders. There is no one at any part of movement that you guys are trying to create that is trying to see anyone moved out of this town. I respect where you come from, I respect your history, I respect you as a person. That gentleman is, I, I know him, I had known him for years.
No, I said, I said that we needed more young...
Okay, we're not, we're not, remember the rules, the guidelines, like, so...
I just wanted to answer the fact that there's a negative connotation to young people that you guys think that we're trying to not take into fact. I respect you guys as people and your decision-making process. I understand this was not an easy hire, it couldn't have been an easy hire. But I also agree with everyone else in this room, mostly, I apologize, not everyone, that I find it very hard to believe that out of 14 people, this man with obvious character flaws and a history of racism and sexism was the best candidate. I'm gonna have a hard time admitting it to my children when it happens again to us in a few months and we're all reeling for it because it's inevitable. I'm a Parson Rec Commissioner, I'm not speaking on behalf of that group, I'm speaking as myself. We just made a fantastic hire, a young woman who was eager to come in here and do great things for this town. And I am concerned for her on a daily basis having to work with this gentleman.
Okay, who, who's next to speak?
Hi, my name is Jessica Williams. I just had a question if you spoke to Alana Wilson? And if not, why?
Jessica, you'll have to say that again.
Sorry, I'm not good at speaking in front of people. I'm wondering if you spoke to Alana Wilson? Alana Wilson?
Uh, yes, we did.
Okay, I would like to hear what she had to say about this thing.
Thank you. Thank you for asking that. Alana Wilson, um, actually, we spoke to her attorney and her attorney said that Jim Gleason is a very kind and compassionate man. Not direct, we couldn't, we couldn't get to her. But her representative, her attorney, said that he was, he was not racist and he was a very kind and compassionate man.
Is that on the record? I just, I'm sorry. I just wonder why he didn't publicly apologize? Because if I said something like that, I would immediately apologize. It's all about growth and improvement. And he has second chances. But this man said something very hurtful. It's on his true path. I mean, there's a whole news article about it. It's just, it's very hurtful. I would not want old people or people of color to live there or open here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. We had a committee, yes. We, we had a committee, uh, very well-educated, very, um, people that are very much aware of Littleton's project, uh, 50,000-foot view, um...
You didn't tell these people that you had other people making the decisions because you had a committee. Who was on that committee, I'd like to know.
We are not privileged to say at this time.
Why? You've gotta say what, if you had a committee, you've got to say what it is and you can't snuck it out.
We don't, do we melt? No, no, we do not have to disclose that.
Is that your guess on the public record?
Um, I believe in the Courier. Tara Giles and Angel spoke about calling Alana, um...
Don't ask me about that, don't ask me about any of the hiring process that's on the public record.
Because of the nature of the conversations, it is, it was non-public.
Why is that conversation necessary? If it's supposed to be, I, I understand, why is a conversation like that necessary? If a guy doesn't have such facts? Why is he even, how is he being considered as a candidate? How are you not excluded?
Blake, Blake, we've got, we've got other people that want to speak. So we, we can come back to that?
Please, the next person would like to speak.
Hi, Mary Ede. I've only been here 27 years. But I see a number of town managers. And I know it's a difficult job in choosing one. But the town manager's job is usually not a very long-lived job in that, in the communities. The reason is, any decision that they make is only liked by 50% of the people. So it's really a people job. It's not a money job. That is the selectman's job. He brings those projects to the selectmen and they're the ones who make the decisions. My big question, I have two questions to Mr. Gleason. One is, when he was in all these other communities, he really took a number of them out of, uh, bankruptcies. And these are the things that you zeroed in on. And he lowered the taxes. My big question would be, how did he do that? And I betcha it was the cut jobs. Because that's where most of the money is in our budget. And that would be my one big question to Mr. Gleason is, if you can answer it, what his answer was, I'd love to know. Because you usually can't do it by just having less pencils and paper. The, the other thing is, I don't understand why Mr. Gleason still wants to come to this community. When he has seen that website of the names and he knows this is going on, why he wants to come to a community where he has to work with the people in this town? All the people, not just the selectmen. And when he's not wanted, why he would still want to come?
I would like to ask what the legal pretext under which you are withholding the membership of, of the selection committee is? Again, this is a question. What is the legal pretext under which you're basing the withholding of the membership of the selection committee on?
So it's a confidential thing, Jim.
It is, that, saying it's confidential, does not make it confidential. What specific law, RSA, whatever, what specifically requires this to be confidential when no other selection committee's ever been confidential?
They signed a nondisclosure agreement.
Of course, they signed a nondisclosure and undiscussed the resumes of the individuals and names and everything. There's no nondisclosure that applies to the membership of the committee. Simply not. So where, where, are we pulling this confidential out of thin air? Where is it coming from? So, okay, so that's a question. What is the legal pretext? Because you're, you're just saying it's confidential, does not make it confidential. And my, my subsequent question is, was that committee aware of all of this? Were they involved in the due diligence? Were they involved in the selection? Were they made aware of these issues?
Let me just answer part of this, Jim. It really doesn't have anything to do with legal, uh, reasons. The three selectmen...
Did you just say it was?
The three select, well, I think what she meant to say is the three selectmen make the decision. The committee was only advisory to the three of them. They asked the members of the committee for their opinion on each of these candidates. It went from six down to two. And, uh, from two down to one. They made that decision on their own. The people on the committee were only advisory, they did not make the decision. Your second question, the answer was yes, apparently they were fully informed. In fact, independent of the committee meeting, they were googling everyone, you know, that was on, on the list to be interviewed. But we have to remember, the only law here is the law that allows the selectmen to make that decision. They were asked opinions and they gave, they gave their opinions of people. But the larger group of the search committee people shrunk down to just the three selectmen at the end. They made, they interviewed the last two candidates on their own. The others did not. And that decision was made there. So they were advisory to the, to the selectmen. That was the condition.
Who's, who's next?
My name is Shannon, I'm a Littleton resident. And I think everyone's point really was, who was on this committee that helped you make this decision? Were they informed? How were they not alarmed by the things that they found? And then what law protects you from having to tell us as citizens, who helped you make this decision?
Going back to what, um, Milt said it was an advisory committee. They signed a nondisclosure. We looked to them for support. Yes, they vetted everything out just like we did. And then same, same questions. And then it got down to two. And it was the responsibility of the selectmen to make the final decision. But Shannon, thank you for that question. It is a good question. Is there anybody else that hasn't asked a question or spoken before? Okay, Frank?
I've followed this thing pretty closely. And, um, I just, I'm just a little bit taken back by my fellow residents in a way. Who here in this room, please raise your hand for me, that hasn't screwed up? So that means nobody's raising their hand, right? Okay, so we, we've listened to this guy and, and I don't know him that well, at all. And, but I do trust these guys. And I think the township trusts them too. Carrie just re-elected with overwhelming majority with two people running against her. And I know from being an employer that some of the best past employees I had had baggage. And some of the current ones I have have baggage. We showed a little compassion when I was on a limb form. They also came with some awful good things. And so we, and I've employed hundreds of people. We looked at it, we evaluated it. They were the best. And to this, in, the recent economy has been so good that finding help is not easy. I'm not sure it's that way as far as finding the town manager goes. But when you're looking for somebody, sometimes to get what you really need, you have to put up with something that you don't like. I, I, can I talk? I did, I let all of you guys talk. Sometimes you may have to hire the only guy that can fix a steam boiler, but there's not a thing about him you like, but he can get the job done. Now, again, I'm coming back to these guys. I was a part of the hiring process, I only know when I ran the Courier. I know currently in this town, we have people with worse baggage that work for the town all the time. We've been through it with them, let them come back and they still do a fine job. And all I would ask of all of you, and I could be entirely wrong, but these guys have been kind of dragged through the mononess, we've lost Chad, which doesn't make me happy. We hear all the time how can't get people to serve on the boards. I don't know how many people ran out of polls on the ballot with different positions. And then the, the hiring process, to the best of my knowledge, for a town manager has always been the way it's done. There hasn't been a committee.
There's a two-man letter, remember, you're forcing everyone else to vote.
I think you overdid that. No. I'll get done because I'm not here, I'm not saying what you want to hear.
Thank you, Frank. We do have about 10 minutes left. So if there's anybody else... Courtney, I see your hand, but I want to make sure first if there's anybody else that hasn't spoken. Rodney?
Hi, Rod Marvin. We never have any public input on anybody we hire. The selectmen always doing. Was there public input for your job? No. Was it public input for your job?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there was a committee, apparently, for this guy. I just respect you guys for what you're doing. Just do your job. We elected you.
Thank you, Rod. Anybody else that hasn't spoken? Courtney, like I said, I see your hand. I just want to, I just want to make sure we, okay, we have a... Three of us, okay.
Hi, can you hear me? Yeah, can you hear me?
No.
Sorry, pardon my mask. My name is Caitlin Jeridoshen. I'm a Littleton resident. And I guess I just, I wanted to say that, you know, I feel like we, you know, some of the people here that are standing up are, you know, we're not saying that nobody's ever made a mistake. People make mistakes all the time, none of them does. But I just, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, you said that Mr. Gleason, you know, was upfront with you and brought this up. I guess I want to hear what he said and how he stood up for what he did, because I think it was, it was very problematic. And it's not something that someone in a position of power should be doing. But my other question is, what can we do to make it so that this doesn't happen again? Like you said back there, some people are, you know, having public input for these positions. Maybe that needs a change in what can we do? What can be the next step for that? I guess is my question. You know? Yeah.
Thank you.
Because thank you for that input, Caitlin. Courtney, I guess, I'm not seeing anybody else, so...
So I'm, I'm sorry. I'm going to look back to the question that I asked. I understand that we cannot disclose the individuals who are on the citizens' panel, but perhaps you could disclose their roles in the community? Are they other public service leaders? Are they business owners? Are they just one of the low-income citizens? I think it's important for us to understand what that panel was made up of, who helped you single out the top of the 14 candidates. I also have a curiosity question that may or may not be answered. But out of the 14 candidates, I'm wondering, out of them, who was female? Who was under the age of 50? Because if those were not in the pool, then maybe we needed to continue searching.
Thank you, Courtney. Anyone else? I, I can tell you this, Courtney. We can tell you this, that the, the people on the committee were and are very well-respected in this community. I can tell you that. I guess, I guess I'm not...
You say where you spent...
No, no, one, one at, one at a time. One at a time. Courtney, I want to make sure that I do answer your question. So if I can ask for clarification? I, you're looking for, I'm not going to disclose the names, but we will say this, that they're well-respected in the community. I would like to put a plug in here right now. We would covet having younger people on the boards, on the committees. We would, we really would, because it would be...
Or the younger selectmen.
Right. Younger selectmen? Yes, yeah. Do you want to grab the mic, so everybody can hear, Courtney?
So as a member of the younger generation, I have been wanting to be part of the conversations. However, I have to work so hard and so much to pay my bills. I am not living a grand lifestyle. I am living well with the right means to pay off debt. You cannot blame young people for not being part of the conversations. Hold on. Because we're working really hard to just live. So unfortunately, it does fall onto the older generation who has more time, because it fits into their lifestyle and their daytime. You know what I mean? Younger people were having to work. Now, I'm not, I'm not discounting the work that the older generation has put in, but it was different. So, but that being said, I do agree with you that younger people need to be involved. And I would like to have that conversation with you, how we can understand this community.
Thank you. Thank you. And we fully understand that younger people do have to work. There are young families. I mean, we've all gone through that. So we get it. We get it. And we have to, have to make the time. But we would like to have that conversation, Courtney. And thank you for sharing that. Appreciate it.
Hi there, Aaron Jeridoshen, Littleton resident. I happen to be one of these younger...
What, what's, what's your name?
Aaron Jeridoshen.
Okay. Thank you.
I happen to belong to the young community as well. I happen to be sitting on the zoning board as well. There are some young people in your space and who want to make an effort to fix this town up and help contribute. But seeing something like this get passed through, it disgusts me. It makes me not want to be part of it. And I can actually say, too, I'm an educator. If I were to be caught stating anything like that on Facebook or online, I'd be out so fast. And I'm an educator. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Aaron. We've got about four minutes.
Hi, I'm Bethi Kulpitz, and I live in Monroe, New Hampshire. And I know that you described Jim Gleason as compassionate and kind. And I just want to make sure that it's said that a responsible adult holds themselves accountable for their actions in actionable steps to make sure that something like that doesn't happen again.
Thank you, Ben. Did you say Ben for Becky?
Ben.
Ben?
I think that I'm probably going to be the last one. And I just want to ask, after hearing all of us, everyone had a chance to speak that wanted to, and knowing that I'm going to hold your answers for when I'm voting again, knowing everything that we've said and hearing all of the opposition, are both of you, sitting right there, proud about the decision that you made and standing behind it 100%? Because moving forward, every person in this community is going to know that that's what you supported, which in my brain, you align with his ideals of his racism, bigotry, sexism. So I want to know if you're still proud after hearing what everyone said?
I'm standing with my decision. I've done enough research on this man to believe that he'll come in and do a good job for Littleton. And the only way that he can do a good job is if you people give him a chance. If you're at his show the whole time, it won't have promise. But if you let him do his job and prove himself to you, then we can have this conversation in a year. Thank you.
Yes, I am. And I do, I appreciate everyone sharing, because this, it's not an easy decision. So I appreciate you coming out tonight and, and sharing. I've taken a lot of notes. It hasn't gone...
Hi.
Tia, go ahead.
I have friends that are from this town who went to high school and they don't...
We can't, Tia, we can't hear you. Yeah, here you go.
Basically, I think it's wrong to have a man who has a racist history and has a history of discrimination and discriminatory behavior. I have friends who are part of the BIPOC community, which means Black Indigenous people of color. And I think hiring a man like this creates a bad reputation for this town, because anyone can come here and research your town manager and say, oh, we don't want to live here. It makes it unwelcoming for people who are not white. Is that the impression you want to make for this town? Please rethink.
Again, we want to thank you all for being here tonight and voicing your opinions on both sides. Heidi?
Wouldn't he be here for the public opinion account?
We haven't, we haven't said that yet. He, he starts his job April 12th.
Okay. So he would be in the office by April 12th?
Correct.
Okay. And quick question. How long is his contract?
We have not even established that yet. Yeah, we had mentioned that early on. We're still working on that. Yeah, pre, pre-contract.
Signed an agreement.
He signed an agreement, yes. He has signed an agreement. We are, we are still working on the contract. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.